All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting in order. Karen, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
And Chair Gerard.
Here. I don't think we have a flag tonight, but we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, I guess we do have a flag. Wait a minute. Donovan, are you giving us a flag?
I'm giving you the flag.
I don't think so.
Oh, no?
No, it looks more like a highway interchange. Just saying. There's, I'm sure there's a flag down there somewhere. There we go.
Hey, I'm new to this stuff.
Feel free to turn off your video for joining us. Dan, and join us for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is stand. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda is to approve the agenda. The chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Kevin?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, I post Karen, you're supposed to do a roll, aren't you? You gave me the look. You gave me the stink eye. See, I've been married for 25 years.
Well, that's real. Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen.
Aye.
Commissioner Brink.
Aye.
And Chair Gerard.
Aye.
Next, the chair is looking for a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from the April 14th, 2021 meeting.
Susan? Move approval of the minutes of the April 21 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Susan, I assume you mean the April 14th, 2021 move.
I apologize, sir. Yes, I do.
So you know what, any discussion? Karen, would you do the roll, please?
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen.
Aye.
Commissioner Brink. And Chair Gerard.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is a business expansion for Whittaker Buick GMC at 131 19th Street Southwest. It's a building and expansion site plan review application. This is not a public hearing, but if someone would be interested, we would probably consider any input that they may have. Donovan, I assume you're kicking us off with the presentation?
Yes, I am. Chair remembers the planning commission. I'd like to present the site plan review for the expansion of Whittaker Buick GMC located 131 19th Street Southwest. The dealership is located in our main, you know, car dealer area. Just, this is located just south of Famous Dave's Barbecue. The expansion is on the north side of the building. And you can see that there's no change in access and it's on entirely existing impervious surface. The, you know, detail of the site plan shows here. The approximately 2700 square foot addition. In this.
Excuse me, Donovan. Are we supposed to be seeing something?
I thought you caught, I'm sorry, I didn't, it's two clips.
But then we lost it.
Okay.
Thank you.
There, thank you.
I assume Dennis and Kevin, that's what you were, very good. Please continue, Donovan.
Thank you. So on the, on the north side of the building is the approximately 2700 square foot addition. It involves the relocation of a few parking spaces as well as the dumpster enclosure. As I mentioned, it's on existing impervious surface, and so this doesn't meet the watershed rules for any of their permitting, just due to scale of the project as well as the, is, you know, being on existing impervious. The addition does comply with the setback rules for that, that northern side setback. As well as, you know, the addition is proposed to be the same height as, practically the same height as the existing building. And what it's, the addition is to be used for servicing electrical vehicles with additional service bays and the room to maneuver because of the heavy batteries, forklifts are needed. Of course, I, I have forgotten to mention that Darwin Lindahl, the architect, is here representing the project. And welcome, Darwin.
Yes, thank you.
The, the fire chief has no concerns about fire emergency access related to this addition. The minimum design standards are for the zoning, for this commercial zoning district are met with this. I want to show you a little detail of the elevations, which aren't colored, but you can see the, the design. Where my cursor is, is the addition on that left hand as you face the building, left hand side, northern side. And then it just continues around. So there's two vehicle entrances with a person entrance in the middle there as well. The the, there are no landscaping currently around the foundation and I believe it's appropriate to continue that. And so there's no landscaping with this in the plan. The the relocation of the current chain link dumpster enclosure does require that a code conforming dumpster enclosure be constructed. And that's on that along the northern property line. Or near the northern property line.
Was to see you or the graphics. We see you now?
You see me now, right?
Yeah, okay. I want to make sure we're not supposed to be looking at the math there.
Yeah.
For the dumpster enclosure.
Well, let me just, I did refer to it, so let me, let me bring that back up. And so there is the relocated dumpster enclosure, and that still is 10 feet off the property line, which, which meets, meets code with that location. The staff recommendation is to approve with the billing permit being obtained before construction begins and that co-compliant trash enclosure be included on the site plan. And with that, I'm happy to take in questions from the planning commission.
Commissioners, any questions for Donovan?
I think this is the easiest one we've had in a long time.
I would agree. Well, then, Dennis?
Is there any indication of what the exterior building materials are? Are they matching the existing? Yeah, I can answer that. Yes, it is. It's a Fabcon random red panel painted white. It was painted back in, I think, 2011 with the upgrades that they did then. So we're using the exact same panel and it'll be painted white. So it looked exactly like the existing building.
Other questions for Donovan? Mr. Lindell, you're representing the applicant this evening. Is there anything you would like to add?
No, I don't, I really don't think anything needs to be added other than, you know, just reiterate that with the the electric vehicles, GM is requiring that Whittaker have two service stalls dedicated for electric vehicles. And they have to have next to it a flat stall. So you've got a hoist and a flat stall. So the addition is actually to accommodate his current, he's got a wash bay with two detail bays. So that this addition is basically to, to take those out of the shop, his current shop and, and dedicate those spaces to the electric vehicles. And like Donovan also mentioned, they require that you have storage for a forklift to lift the batteries. So that some additional square footage that we had to accommodate. So we took the service, excuse me, the, the the car wash and the detail base out of the existing and put it into the addition.
And Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Oh, this is not a public hearing, and so I will bring it back to the Commissioners for a motion, more discussion, whatever the Commissioners would see fit. Kevin?
I would make a motion just to go ahead and approve the, the, the site plan, the site, the site plan expansion with the two conditions that staff recommends.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Susan?
I'll second the motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Kevin?
I might have discussion not regarding the motion. Can we still have discussion regarding the expansion? Or not? Because there's a motion on the table. So.
Why not?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sure I'll get in trouble, but why not?
Yeah, no. So my question is for Mr. Lindell. I think I caught, I think I heard something. I just want to be clear. The expansion originally, as it was presented, it sounded like that was going to be the, the bays for the electric, working on the electric vehicles. But then when you were talking, you said that the bays were going to be switched to where they currently do the washing and the detailing inside the current space. And the addition is going to be now the car wash base.
Correct, correct. That's what it'd be.
Are we doing a full car wash there? Or is it still going to be just like it was before, where they wash it down with a hose and wipe it down?
There is, there is an existing car wash that's inside the, it's for internal use only. And that is currently in the bay on the northeast corner of the, the building. And that's just going to be relocated over to the, into the addition. So, so not expanding anything, not changing any operation that he currently has, or, you know, he's operating that way now and it will just continue.
Okay, so then my question to Donovan is, with this car wash being relocated, are we okay with just relocating a car wash? Or do we have certain requirements that have to be in place for a car wash?
If it's internal use, it doesn't, it doesn't kick in any extra considerations regarding, you know, queuing and, and that sort of thing. Especially if it's only a relocation, as I understand it, Mr. Lindell.
Yes.
Then, you know, that, that's kind of much more favorable for the, for the owner because of the, the cost of the utility hookups. You know, for that change without, with those credits, you know, that's more of an internal thing, but no, Kevin, with, with just internal use, there's all those other things that would otherwise, you know, U standards don't apply.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I had. Sorry, we'll go back to the motion.
No question, no problem.
Thanks for mentioning that, Kevin. I kind of wondered that too, because I remembered when, years ago, there was that car wash on the north side to get serviced there, and it was all nice and clean, and I thought, wait a minute now. Thanks for the clarification.
Any other discussion on the motion? Harry, now we'll call the question. Karen, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty. Commissioner Batty, you're on mute.
Yeah. Hi, sorry.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen.
Aye.
Commissioner Brink.
Aye.
And Chair Gerard.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. We wish you all the best. It's always good to see a business expand in Forest Lake. I hope it all goes well for you and good luck with your project.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
We are at the other. I will start with Donovan, if he's got any other for us tonight.
Okay, a couple of things. I will confirm that there is a meeting agenda for the May 12th planning commission meeting. Also, I do have something else I'd like to kind of throw your way for can you hear me?
Yes.
You're not, okay, yeah, my sound went away for a second. This is just, just for discussion, and if I could kind of adopt you as the community development department, maybe, you know, for, for a few moments. Okay, what this involves is just what do you think as far as change in zoning on, in an area? Now, this is, you know, okay, this is, you know, currently we're looking at the Fenway Fields and the airport. This is the Forest Lake Industrial Park here. You can see the hockey rink. And, you know, this, these are two parcels here adjacent to the airfield that custom mold design just might, sorry about my sound. It keeps going in and out. I'll try to make this quick. So there are two vacant parcels here. They're city owned. They're approximately two and a half acres inside. And I'll, I'll just present my question and you guys can discuss because my sound is just so weird. This is really too small for any sort of commercial users is what we've seen so far with given what the, you know, space demands are. And, you know, these are really impacted by the wetlands and there's a wet storm arm. What would the commission's appetite be for, what if it became like a residential zone, like a MXR3, like for that would permit residential care facilities? Which a couple of ways, a couple of ways to do that, but, you know, it'd be kind of a transition use, you know, between the kind of more industrial you know, in the single family neighborhood to the west. And not be much of a, you know, traffic, you know, generator. Impact the, you know, any kind of activities down here at the ball fields and play fields. What do you think?
So Donovan, run that by again where you want it, where you're thinking of it on that map. Just show a pointer there.
Okay, I'll go back.
I was trying to follow that and I didn't do well.
Okay, it's, it's, it's in this triangle of between 200 and 6th Street, Fenston Avenue and Fenway.
Oh.
It's currently city owned. It's just, we've had these, part of it's, you know, these have been in the market for you know, over, you know, close to a dozen years, I think. And we just existing uses with with industrial zoning district, which is this underlying zoning district. I'm wondering if perhaps residential care facility you know, might be a better use here.
So Donovan, are you thinking like an assisted living nursing home?
Nursing home, memory care, that sort of thing.
Mike, go ahead.
Are you talking about like, like a complex? So everything's in there, you know, barber shop, beautician, memory care, similar to other cities that all Stillwater Old Park, it's a really big community down there, and it's really nice. Because you were breaking up, you're going in and out. So I wasn't sure, is it just that? Or was there, you're talking about apartment buildings also?
No, well, they're, I mean, they're pretty small. I mean, we can, actually, the, the northern site there is probably smaller than what Common Bond wants to build their 43 unit building on. So it's, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, you know, a large, a real large facility. I did get an inquiry recently and it was basically, you know, just 20 units, a single story. You know, I've gotten a few that are this kind of model where they, economics, I don't think work for really large. And the site just wouldn't accommodate a really large one. But, you know, it's just, I just want to throw it out there and see what the planning commission thinks about this.
So you're looking at more of a, a single story, smaller little complex?
That could be, yeah. I mean, we could even, you know, if that's what we decide that would work for these sites, you know, kind of set that as a, as a standard.
But I think what you're asking, are, are we looking to take it out of the industrial properties that we have and convert it over to somewhat one of the residential districts? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's.
Question you're asking?
That seems like that's kind of the easiest way to do it. I mean, instead of adding, you know, residential care facilities as a permitted use in industrial, I industrial zoning district. You know, it does seem cleaner to, to make it residential or you know, but the city's the owner, so the city doesn't have to, you know, sell to, you know, more houses. You know, more single family homes there or more attached, just regular residential.
Susan?
Donovan, did you say it as an interim use?
No, no, no.
Okay, because I thought I heard interim use. To be honest, with the, the need for athletic fields, I think it makes more sense to, to use it for that since the city already owns the property and, and we're hurting for fields so bad. By the time you got 20 units in there and the parking and, you know, the, the truck dock for, for meals and deliveries and stuff. You got to have a bunch of parking for Mother's Day and holidays and stuff like that. That'd be a tight fit. I mean, I, I know the residents aren't going to park, but the, the problem is that area has a tendency on occasion to get parked up. Folks want to park on Fenway. And if you, whoever it is is going to ask, well, since the residents aren't going to park, we don't need much parking. But you need the parking for the staff. And then, you know, when visitors come, it's, it's going to be significant. I'm, I'm just wondering how stuff is going to fit there.
Hmm. Is, yeah, well, especially that southern site. I mean, that big brown that's, that's all well ends. And of course, I've obviously the wet pond. But, you know, and maybe, I hate to say that, I mean, that you could very well be right. It just, you know, the city put a lot of, you know, investment into making that, you know, be part of, you know, their industrial tax base. And it's just, you know, that, that vision has not come to fruition.
Did I say someone else?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Was there any other ideas besides the, the nursing home thing? It's, it seems to me a very small segment of the nursing home. A 20 unit, that's ridiculously low. I mean, I don't think, in many years of home health that I, that I did, ever see anything like that, except you're thinking Birchwood, 1980. I mean, it just, it's, I don't know how much more marketable that's going to be.
Okay.
That's just my thought.
Some of those transitional care centers are not all that huge either, though.
We're just focusing on that population.
I'm sorry. I think I talked over you, Justin. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I, I was just saying that that, that pipe, we're just focusing on that population only, or is there something else, Donovan, besides your signal that you were looking at? Or was it just that because of the person who contacted you or?
Yeah, I mean, in the zoning code, it's, it's just, it would be, you know, tagged as a residential care, you know, care facility, which could be anything from, you know, for elders, for, you know, people with developmental disability, just people who can't live, you know, independently, basically, and need extra care. So you know, and I'm not attached to this. I just thought, I just wanted, you know, just to see what y'all thought.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm open. You know, I guess if somebody came to you, Donovan, and, and had an idea and we had a, we had a rendering or two to look at, I'm very open to, to moving forward with something and considering anything.
Mike?
Donovan, do you have someone in mind? I mean, has someone approached the city about that spot, that lot for that type of building?
No, no, they're actually looking at another site where the zoning didn't work at all. And it was in, you know, a commercial district. And then I thought, well, you know, what about this over here? You know, it's just kind of a transitional use, you know, between the, the single family and then the more, you know, the, the larger scale industrial or, you know, just the, you know, activity center of the, you know, the athletic fields.
You know, and I, I'm open to developing it if possible. I'm also, per Susan's idea, you know, having additional fields or something over there. Maybe something to talk to the parks commission on and see if, I know they're doing a big master plan. If this fits in their plan, or if they say, no, we're going to move these other fields here somewhere else, and maybe at least get an opinion from them.
Yeah, okay. I will do that.
You know, I've just, I just pulled up the Washington County GIS and just and so I'm looking at a bigger area than what you showed us there. You'd have a hard time getting more than two fields on there and you'd have to, you'd have to mitigate wetlands to make that happen. I mean, if you're looking for a property for something like this, what about that arrowhead shaped piece of property at the, at the end of 20206, 206 there?
Yeah, you know, that is city owned. I mean, that was, we, we traded to get that with the headwaters place, you know, subdivision. So in that one, you know, there's, I'm not sure what the plans are for that, but that is for, you know, for recreational fields.
It is?
Yeah. Or, or, and, or more parking.
Other opinions or comments for Donovan? Well, do we give you enough to at least think about, Donovan?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else you'd like to bring up this evening?
No, that is it.
All right. We, we have Councilperson Munson joining us this evening. Do you have anything for us?
The only thing that I would just give you an update on, the council, all council members joined the EDA on Monday night to participate in the walking tour of downtown. As you know, they've secured a consultant to develop a plan for downtown. So that was kind of, it was a little chilly. It was not, it was not spring weather when we did it. But it was nice to, to hear everybody's ideas. And I think one of the, the greatest things were those that were there. Everyone sounded very consistent ideas and thoughts about downtown. So that was pretty reassuring. And then the only other thing that I would add is, there's also the downtown beautification group, which I believe Susan sits on. And then the only other thing that I would add is there's also the downtown beautification group, which I believe Susan sits on. And they secured a grant from the Hallberg Family Foundation to install a sculpture in Lakeside Park in the roundabout, not the, not the roundabout on the main area on 61, but the one closer to the park outside of Vennelli. So it will be a sculpture of fish and that are in actual Forest Lake. So and I don't have a picture of that, but Susan, you might be able to add more.
Basically, it's, it's, it's going to be about 10 feet tall. Not 10 feet tall. It will be removable so that when it's time for the Christmas tree to come in, that sculpture can leave and come back. The fish are going to be on on sort of wave looking arms and it will move with the wind. So it will have some visual interest. The the beautification group knows that Forest Lake is trying to look at some branding and this is something that we've said, well, let's give this a try. Maybe as we do some of the branding for Forest Lake, we 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 build off of a fish theme. But we're also looking at doing some things that bring some interest, beautification, things that make Forest Lake a little bit more unique. I don't know if any of you noticed, we put pansies in the pots, in the big tall pots. So those are there. That's our group and we work with Blake at Forest Lake Floral on that. If anybody has any other ideas for things that you'd like to see that group, we are going to be planting the Triangle Garden this year. We decided to take that one on.
And the only thing I'd add to that is that the Hallberg Family Foundation donation also covers the the cost for public works to install it as well to put, I think there's a concrete piece that has to go in there. So I think there were some questions.
Questions for Councilman Munson? Kevin?
I was just wondering if we could put a couple of great big lawn chairs out there that are tall and then we could use it kind of like they do in Alexandria and places for photo ops.
Cool. Neat idea.
No, no. No.
When you go up to, where is it where you got, where they have the big walleye out there and you go sit up on the walleye and take the photos? I mean, you know, I'm telling you, people come a long ways to do that stuff. I mean, they'll go to, look at a ball of twine. Come on.
Susan said they were looking for ways to for to make Forest Lake unique. That wouldn't be unique. It's been there, done that, half a dozen cities.
No other updates unless folks have questions.
Anything else for Councilperson Munson? All right. Thank you for joining us this evening.
You are welcome.
We'll go around the room. I'll start with Karen. Do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Chair Gerard. I don't have any updates, but I have been to that ball of twine and it is very cool.
See that, Dennis?
As they say, we'll go around the room. Mike, we'll start with you.
Oh, I've got nothing.
All right, thank you. Dennis?
I think, I think somebody should write a song about that.
Ball of twine?
Well, I don't know, the fish sculpture thing, you know. Or maybe get, I guess, Garrison Keillor doesn't tell stories anymore, but he he had, he had a story about the bag of herb. His story was about the pile of the gunny bags or the, yeah.
Yep, gunny sacks.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have anything. I'm, I've given up asking about when we're going to go back to live meetings. So all this wait till it happens.
Well, Dennis. Munson, you have a comment there?
Good, good news is it was tested again last week and it and it worked. So
Sounds like it's very soon.
We don't have a date yet, but it does apparently function now in the council chambers.
Really good to hear.
You know, but we will have to flip for who gets to sit up on the main stage and who gets the side table because we have to be so far apart. So, you know, probably as a good gesture, myself and Susan should sit off on the side and put your esteemed ones up on the chairs there and we'll be over in the corner.
I think we should, I think we should I think we should cast lots and, you know, for the side tables.
No, I like sitting at the kids' table.
Susan, do you have anything this evening more to add?
No, sir.
Kevin?
No, I do not.
And Justin?
Just wondering with the the fish and everything, is the new tagline going to be Forest Lake, something's fishy?
Oh, no.
Other than that, I have nothing.
It's tough to follow up, so I have nothing. So the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
So
I think I heard Justin first and a second.
I'll second.
Right? A motion and a second. There's no debate on this. So Karen, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Gerard?
Aye. Thank you all. It's not like a little bit of sunshine and warm weather to bring out the smiles in everybody. Enjoy. Have a great weekend.